A quorum being present, the second half of our annual town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the Town of Granby?
Yes, they have.
Please rise as Select Board Chairman, Mr. Chernacki, leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Sitting in the front today, we have our Finance Board, our Select Board, our Town Administrator, our Town Attorney, and our Town Clerk. If you would like to comment or discuss a motion tonight, please raise your hand so that I may recognize you. Please wait for the mic to come to you and stand stating your name and address. Please do not direct a comment or question to a particular member of town meeting; rather, all discussion and questions should be directed towards me and I will direct it towards the appropriate party at town meeting. Please remember that town meeting is comprised of your neighbors and your peers, so please respect and tolerate each other's opinions. If you are a non-resident or a non-voter, please sit in the designated area in the back of the hall. And lastly, please note that in your handouts, there is a pamphlet that lists some parliamentary procedure and how town meeting runs. The moderator will now recognize Mr. George Randall.
Madam Moderator, thank you for the next couple of minutes. I will be brief. Four years ago, a group of us got together to begin planning for the 250th celebration. A formal committee was formed in 2015. We met twice monthly until the first of this year, and then we met weekly. We planned the Miss Granby Scholarship Contest, two successful barn dances, a winter festival, a beard contest, and an amazing parade, all with a minimal budget.
Please do not open the back bleachers. There's seats up front here that you can sit in, but we do not want the back bleachers open, so please come up front and find seats. Once these seats are filled, we will then open the back bleachers. Anybody? And there's also room in the front here, but in the back, I cannot see you.
We planned the Miss Granby Scholarship Contest, two successful barn dances, a winter festival, a beard contest, and amazing parade, all with a minimal budget. A barn quilt tour was planned and executed by the Quilters Group, and what a superb job they did. If you haven't taken the Barn Quilt Tour, please do so. How fortunate we are tonight to be seated here on the day of our incorporation 250 years ago. Before I introduce the committee, I want to say first, thank you to the Town of Granby for allowing us the honor to do all that we did. Personally, I enjoyed working this committee. What a great group of folks to work with. I learned a lot about patience and even some words that perhaps I had forgotten about, so I express a sincere thank you to the committee for all that you have done. I'd like to acknowledge the member of our committee, Micheline Turgeon, Chair. Micheline, she's standing over here. Deb Matthew, our Secretary. Is Deb here? Thank you, Deb. Linda Fish, Financial Management and Corresponding Secretary. Linda's over here. And boy, does she pay attention to detail. Thank you, Linda. Amy Gay. Amy, are you here tonight? Richard Gay. Thank you, Rich. Mike Simpson. Right here, thank you. And Tammy Bebo and myself. Tammy Bebo couldn't be here tonight. She got hurt yesterday and is recovering in rehab. She will be fine in time. Please join me in a round of applause for the entire committee. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Madam Moderator, and again, thank you, Town of Granby.
The moderator will now recognize Mr. Chernacki of the Select Board to speak.
I'll see if I can do this in six minutes. I also, the Select Board would like to also thank everybody involved in making the Charter Day a success. Thank you, George. I appreciate that. That's one of the things that I was going to mention to a lot of people, that I didn't want to miss anybody for fear of insulting somebody. Charter Day was such a success, when I went down to do frames, everybody was having enormous amount of fun. The parade was unbelievable, and the fireworks that evening. I still have people commenting how dynamic they were, and I have to admit, thank you to that committee. You guys did a bang-up job, and I can't tell you. It was very, very good. Thank you. Oh, God. The next thing, what I want to do is address the town of what has transpired over the course of the past year. Education is always one of the biggest things that are on our plate. It's the biggest budget. As normal always comes with, education comes with a high cost. There really is no way around it. We have to educate our students, and it comes at a high cost. In recent months, the Select Board, Finance, and School Committee have agreed to meet on a regular basis. This has started a positive dialogue towards the education of our students in this town. I am very pleased to let everybody know, things are moving, not quickly, but definitely in a positive manner for the students and for the teachers and the School Board Committee. Since those talks, the Select Board has asked Mr. Martin to revisit and sharpen his pencil a little bit, to see what we can do for the school district. He came back with the funding of $200,000 more, along with the 305. That indeed was difficult to do, but it was definitely an essential thing we thought needed to happen. So the Select Board, along with the Finance Committee, has agreed to give the school district another $200,000, along with the 305. I'm very pleased to hear that. I support that. The Select Board also supports that. Tonight, they may be asking to, what? Add more money to the budget. That's up to the people of the town to decide on that. The other things that have happened is we're going to be getting a grant rider for the entire town. We've decided to vote on and get a grant rider for every department in the Town of Granby. We feel that we're missing out on some of the grants, and state and federal grants, that need to be looked at through a professional eye. The other thing is, we have a new electric vehicle free of charge and a charging station free of charge already done at the COA. That is a positive thing for this town, that we got a brand-new vehicle, electric car. The other thing is, at the COA, I recognized at the COA when the senior citizens, thank you, the senior citizens did indeed have difficulty entering and exiting the COA. So I went to Mr. Martin. He indicated that we would put in handicap doors, and we did. The West Street School Study, I am pleased to announce, thanks to the committee members Virginia Snowpack, Brian Haushild, myself, John Sullivan, and Louis Berry, it is complete. As of last week, we have the report back from the engineers, what to do with the vehicle, what to do with the building itself, and it will be online for everybody to view. That comes to a couple other little things. So that's complete. We're ready to go when everybody reviews that report. The other thing that I'd like to mention tonight, I'm going to mention a component of this town that has been serving it for the past nine years. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Mark Bale for his retirement, number one, but indeed, I would like to have a hand for him for all the level of dedication and timeless, just the timeless amount of time he gives and gave to this town. So, Mr. Bale. What's that? No, I'm going to mention that. Thank you. The Governor Charlie D. Baker, Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito, for 250th. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Granby, on the behalf of the citizens of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon the town this governor's citation in recognition of your 250th anniversary, this 10th day of June in the year of 2018.
Sorry?
It's all right. Charlie Baker and Lieutenant Karen Polito. The other thing I'd like to mention is, this past weekend, after the parade, State Rep. Goldstein Rose and State Rep. Seibach and Senator Les, State Senator Les, presented the town with a copy of the Charter of the Town. And I'd like to recognize them, and they're not here, but I'd still like to recognize them, that they were nice enough to recognize the Town of Granby with the Charter.[823.63][823.63](applause) And since my six minutes is up, hopefully it goes. Good.
The moderator will now recognize Mr. Libera of the Finance Committee to speak.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm John Libera, representing the Finance Committee. Granby has reached quite a milestone celebrating our 250th birthday. Welcome to the beginning of Granby's next quarter millennium. And we have good news for this beginning year. The proposed budget is balanced for fiscal year 2019. Looking toward the future, the Finance Committee, in this annual report to the town, would like to share with you some concerns about the extended financial outlook for Granby. Our Town of Granby has a small population and is heavily dependent upon residential taxation. It is financially difficult to provide the same level of municipal and educational services as a town or city with a large population or with a large non-residential income base. A small town lacks the advantages of economies of scale. This is Granby's difficult choice. Big benefits with big bills, or smaller benefits, our bills. The situation is neither new nor unique, and it is no secret that financial pressures are increasing. Local municipal services are subject to pressures. Town employees are inefficiently housed in multiple locations. Something needs to be done with the old West Street School. As for road repairs, harsh winter conditions and repair costs driven by inflation do not match up well with the decrease in state funds for road repair. Granby's OPEB liability, that's the other post-employment benefits, not including pension costs, has recently been calculated as more than $23 million. These are costs that will have to be paid for eventually. Granby's largest expenditure, the budget for education, is another example. Per pupil expenditures are increasing faster than inflation. Granby's per pupil costs are higher than many surrounding towns despite having lower house valuations. School enrollments have decreased, adding to the pressure. The budget amounts proposed here for the schools are $943,467 higher than the state mandated minimum. That is more than the annual loan repayment costs for the new school complex. Granby's tax rate has risen dramatically, partially to accommodate the school building renovation project, and is now in the top 10.3% of the state's communities. House valuations, meanwhile, are in the bottom 27% of the state's communities. If Granby wants the big benefits with the big bills, the question will be, how to pay for that? Currently, over 91% of Granby's tax levy comes from a residential base. A substantial influx of businesses into Granby would be needed to alleviate the tax pressures on households. We can be hopeful about revenue increases, but experience suggests that is not as easy as it sounds. There needs to be something done by a group of representatives from various boards and committees and taxpayers in town. This group should evaluate the financial pressures and their possible solutions facing the town with regard to both municipal and educational services provided to the town. At a recent joint meeting of the Select Board, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee, a commitment was made to start this process in the near future. We encourage this group to include a broader spectrum from the town and include both municipal and educational services in their deliberations. This collaboration gives the Finance Committee a reason for optimism. In conclusion, Granby is on a sound financial footing for another year. The real problems are in the near future and close enough to be of concern. Those problems are also serious enough to warn the intention of all the taxpayers of Granby. Thank you.
The moderator will now recognize Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise the appropriate $403,112 to operate Municipal Solid Waste Department, consisting of wages $5,000, expenses $398,112, for a total of $403,112. And that $13,071 be raised from municipal solid waste receipts, $57,000 be raised from retained earnings, and $333,041 be raised from tax levy.
Thank you. Second, opening up for discussion.
This amount is necessary to fund the curbside collection program for next fiscal year.
Are there any questions or comments in the front here? Go ahead and stand up so she can see you, or he, whoever's coming over.
Rich Demiraki, Bachelor Street. Could you tell me how much was appropriated from the tax levy last year? You want $333,000 for this year. What was it last year? And how much did it increase, if it did increase?
Rich, last year was the same amount.
The same amount?
Same amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a question up on the bleachers?
Dennis Hoel, Chickaby Street. Is there a reason why Article 19 and 20 is not laid out like all the other articles that has the school department, personal service, expenses, capital outlay? If you did it that way, we would see the three, two previous years on what was expended versus a lump sum like what is being proposed for 19 to 20.
The funding source is different. The articles that are all lumped together for the budgets basically come from general revenue, available expenses, with some exceptions for some money from some stabilization funds. This is coming from, a large bunch of this comes from the fund that's been set aside for the trash collection. So you'll notice the same thing with the ambulance department, sewer department. Those funds come from sources that are dedicated to those items, mostly. Dennis, we can do that as a separate document if that's what you want. We'll give you the three-year history, just like we do for the regular budget, but it'll be as a separate document. It will not be part of the motion.
I think it would just clarify, you know, people could read it, and Mr. Demiraki's question would have been answered before, you know, it was presented. Thank you.
We have a question in the aisle.
Pam Mayhugh, 326 Bachelor Street. Retained earnings, is that part of the taxes that are raised to collect the trash? Because I mean, we have a debt, we have an override for that. So if we have extra money, wouldn't that be able to take that out of our taxes then and put it back into the general fund?
Okay, Pam. The 333 is the override amount. That's a set figure that we will contribute to this fund on an annual basis. The retained earnings figure is, when we budget based upon the estimates given by Waste Management for a three-year period, the actuals may be less than what was budgeted for. That creates a surplus that we can then use to fund the operations instead of increasing taxation on an annual basis.
So that is extra money?
Extra money is for that one operation, yes. And right now, the balance in that account is 398,000, so I want to start spending that amount down.
Well, I was under the impression when we decided to put this on the ballot and have it be part of our taxes, so it could come right out of it, rather than it being a fee. And this was supposed to be the set cost. So if we have this money, and now we have extra, I mean, and you said we had 300 and something extra? That's a lot of money compared to what we were only supposed to pay a set amount of fee every year.
What it is, Pam, is this. Every three years, we go out to bid for curbside trash collection. We get an estimate for a three-year period of time. Every time we renew the contract is when we go back as the Board of Selectment and review if we can ask for a tax underwrite. The Board of Selectment did that last year. We reduced the tax amount coming from taxation by $30,000. It used to be 363 a year that was being paid by taxes. Because we got a better deal from Waste Management on this next round of contract bidding, we were able to reduce the amount coming from taxation by 30,000. That doesn't mean we didn't have money in the fund, because we budget based upon 144 tons per year. If we only generate 100 tons, we will generate an excess amount of money. Okay? That's what this third 57,000 is coming from, is that amount that we didn't use, that we budgeted on. Now, in another year, we could use, probably do 150 tons. That excess will come out of this fund. It's not coming from taxes. It's not coming from anybody's pocketbook. It's coming from the operations of this one department.
Okay. So, all this excess money that you have, what fund is it in?
It is in the Municipal Solid Waste Enterprise Fund.
And the town meeting vote for that?
Yes, you approved the Enterprise Fund back in 2016, 2017.
Okay. Is there any way that this will ever turn into a fee, rather than through the taxes? Because there are people that have taken upon themselves to have their own disposal and not have to use it. Plus, there's lots of property out there where there's nobody living, and yet there's acres and acres and acres of land that get taxed, and they're not even generating any trash. And I don't think that's fair.
That's your opinion.
Thank you, Pam.
You're not going to answer that?
I believe that was an opinion, not a question. So do we have any further questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
One more question in the back.
Joe Ferning, 154 Taylor Street. As the former head of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, we had great debates going forward, saying, should it be fee, should it be just tax base? Overall, the town gets a better deal doing it this way. Because if you allowed everybody to negotiate, then what's going to happen is the cost per individual is going to go up. Why? Because of the competition. We don't have the population density. We have 57 miles of road that whoever picks up our trash has to cover. Yes, it's not always fair for those individuals that have undeveloped land. However, they're not paying as high a tax rate. The other thing that we always threw out in the discussion was that we are a community, and so we try to do what's fair for the community, and nothing ever always works out to be exactly equitable for everybody else. Thank you.
So I'm going to move the question unless there's some other comment that we haven't discussed yet. So in order for the motion to pass under Article 19, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton for the motion under Article 20.
Thank you. Ms. Moderator, I move the town raise and appropriate $266,457 four hundred and fifty-seven dollars to operate the sewer department, consisting of wages of ten thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, expenses one hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, capital of thirty thousand and debt of sixty-one thousand one hundred dollars totaling, totaling two hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And of that, two hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars will be raised from sewer receipts and forty-two thousand three hundred will be raised from retained earnings.
Second, and discussion?
This is, simply this is the amount to fund our sewer department for next fiscal year.
So are there any questions on this article? In the front?
John Pelham, one oh-four Muncing Ridge. Madam Moderator, I have a question. What is debt? Does that mean interest expense?
Does that mean what?
Interest expense. Is that what the debt line item refers to?
That is both, interest and principal. We are paying down a bond for when we installed the whole sewer system and that is our FY nineteen debt payment, like your mortgage payment for that one year. It's both principal and interest.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? In order for the motion under Article twenty to pass, it must pass by a majority. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Fire Chief Mitchell to present the motion under Article twenty-one.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate three hundred five thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars to operate the ambulance department. Wages, one hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and one dollar. Expenses, sixty-seven thousand sixty dollars. Capital, six thousand three hundred dollars and debt of five, fifty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars for the total of the three oh five one thirty-seven. And that two hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-seven be raised from ambulance receipts and fifty-two thousand be raised from retained earnings.
Second, and opening up for discussion?
Good evening, everyone. Last year, when I was appointed Fire Chief, I came at a time when the upcoming fiscal budgets were due for the various departments. At town meeting, what I presented was a budget that was prepared and submitted before I began. Over the last year and a half, I have had the opportunity to become better acquainted with the finances of the Granby Fire Department and the two separate budgets, Fire and Ambulance. The ambulance budget, as I have come to learn, is financed through the Enterprise Fund. The greatest expense in the Enterprise Fund is salaries of the full-time staff. It has been expected by the town that the Enterprise Fund would finance the ambulance budget. What has occurred is the town subsidizing the Enterprise Fund to support the budget. This has been a source of contention for the community. I have heard the concerns of the residents and proposed to the Select Board and Finance Committee a change to better align the budgets more appropriately. You may notice that our ambulance budget has decreased significantly. Conversely, in a following article, you will see our bu- fire budget has increased. Here is why. Our call volumes have increased over the years. At a point, about seventy-five percent of our responses were EMS while twenty-five were fire. Today, our numbers are different. Sixty percent of our calls are EMS while forty are fire. However, there's a bigger picture here. Just because our department responds to more EMS calls than fire calls, our full-time staff spends about seventy-five percent of their time working, performing fire-related duties such as inspections, public safety education, and other station duties. Twenty-five percent of their time is performing EMS-related responsibilities such as responding to medical calls. With this in mind, I recommended an adjustment in the budgets. If full-time staff are spending seventy-five percent of their time on fire-related work, shouldn't seventy-five percent come out of the fire budget? To use monies from the Enterprise Fund to pay for fire-related work is inappropriate and robs the community of potential revenues that would be better spent on saving for needed EMS equipment and apparatus for the community. This split in the budget does not cost the town any more than what it has been spending to this point. What it does do is allows the town to use the Enterprise Fund for what it was intended for and increase the potential to see revenues generated in the Enterprise Fund and to be applied to enhancing the EMS service delivery of the community.
Are there any questions or discussion? In the back here and then in the aisle.
Joe Furney on one fifty-four, Taylor Street. What is our bad debt on collection of ambulance bills?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I, I didn't quite hear you.
What is the bad debt on the collection of ambulance bills?
What we do, Joe, is every three months, the Board of Selectmen reviews unpaid bills, ambulance bills. They then turn them over to a collection agency for collection. What happens is, is when they, when it's collected by this agency, they retain one-third and we get two-thirds of what is collected. The balance in that account as of the end of April is about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Rich, can you stand up so they can see you?
Rich Demorecki, Bachelor Street. I'm just curious, could you tell us over the last twelve months, how many ambulance calls there were in Granby and out of Granby?
So, Mr. Demorecki, I can tell you in calendar year seventeen, there were six hundred and ninety-eight EMS calls. I, I don't have the breakdown of which ones were outside of Granby, but a vast majority were responses in our town.
Was there a question in this group? No, no further questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have one quick question. Under wages, does that include the, the police officer that has to be the first responder to the scene or just the fire department?
We only pay for fire department personnel.
So there's no further questions or discussion? So in order for the motion to pass under Article twenty-one, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. A lot of wires up here. The moderator will now call on John Libera to present the motion under Article twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article twenty-two. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expense of the town, including debt and interest for the ensuing year and to carry out any vote passed under this article. Item one, school department. Personal services, six million thirty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Expenses, one million six hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Capital outlay, nine thousand seven hundred and eight dollars for a total of seven million seven hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Can I have a second for item one? Discussion?
Uh, the amount, uh, seven million seven hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars represents a sum of three things. First is the minimum required net school spending. The second is the three hundred and five thousand plus override we passed some number of years ago. And the third is an additional two hundred thousand dollars that the Finance Committee voted to support as a transition amount. You may have heard in my opening remarks that there's going to be a committee meeting to look at the overall financial structure of the town and how to think of appropriate amounts for municipal services and, and educational services. And so the Finance Committee voted to go beyond what we had done in the past, which was the additional three hundred and five thousand, and approve an additional two hundred thousand. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion up in the bleachers?
Dennis Hull, Chickaby Street. On page two, there's a, a paragraph regarding the three hundred and five thousand and so forth. First of all, I have a question. Why are we bringing up figures fourteen years old?
What are we looking at?
Second is, why are we talking about four hundred and three thousand for retired teachers' health insurance when I don't see anything else brought up on any other budgets about paying for retirements funds? And third, um, I, I'll, I'll bring that up again. It's, it's a comment more. On this four hundred and three thousand dollars, this is for the retired health insurance. I'm not sure if people understand, but years ago, I brought this up. The teacher's retirement health insurance is paid at a tune of eighty-five to ninety percent, where all the other town employees are about fifty percent. Back in nineteen seventy-five, approximately, the Board of Selectmen, two members had teachers in the system, they came up with this general law that they were able to apply and they voted on it. I brought this up at a previous town meeting and the only way that that ninety, eighty-five to ninety percent could be reduced is that it has to be done by the Board of Selectmen. As insurance costs are going crazy, this is a great way to start reducing our costs and all it takes is a two-thirds vote by a three-board member of the Board of Selectmen.
Dennis, you are correct. It is the retired municipal teachers program through the Group Insurance Commission. That's what you're referencing on the four hundred and three thousand. I had been tasked to investigate how the town can go about getting out of that program so that we are not paying between eighty and eighty-five percent of the premium based upon the retirement date. I have that task, I'm currently investigating it and hopefully the Board of Selectmen will be able to address it within the next fiscal year.
Do you have a follow-up question and then Emre?
Yes. Okay, so if I understand these, all these figures in that one paragraph, that is what you guys are saying that you're spending over net school spending? Okay, so basically, the only thing that I can justify is potentially the two hundred thousand that was approved. I can't see why you're bringing up something fourteen years old and I can't see you bringing up the four hundred and three thousand because no other department is being penalized for paying for their health insurance out of their existing budgets.
Thank you.
Good evening. Emre Everin, eighteen Crescent Street. I am also the chairperson of the School Committee. First of all, on this great occasion, happy twenty-fiftieth to our beloved town. I want to start reminding ourselves where we were last year. Around this time, we were looking at about seven hundred thousand dollars in deficit and that was actually a reduced amount from over nine hundred thousand dollars. While tonight, I'm not able to tell you that we do not have a budget shortfall, the deficit that we are talking about is a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. There are multiple factors. One of them, you would remember, the state funding is the biggest source for our budget and that remains to be inadequate. Special education is another big factor and that number is, has been going up in the recent years as well as insurance costs, especially health insurance. On the other side, we have some good news since last year that we can share. We see enrollment is stabilizing. As you remember, the numbers have been going down in the last several years, in fact, since two thousand and ten. This is the first year in a long time that we ended the school year with more students in our school district than we started with. And with everything going well and based on our estimates and the number of students we are seeing re-registering, we are estimating that the dramatic declines in our enrollment are stabilizing or are over and it will allow us to look how we can improve those numbers going forward. Another great number that I want to share with you is the number, the percentage of students, Granby, Granby's own residents who are school-age students coming to our schools. That number had gone down all the way to mid-sixties. It is back up to seventy-five, about seventy-five percent and we are shooting for mid-eighties as we go forward. So more students from our own town are looking to remain in our district. As it was mentioned before, there was great collaboration during the budget process this year. Great discussion, great focus on what we can do together and what else we need to do going forward. So for that, I want to thank our Select Board, our Finance Committee, our Town Administrator for their help and guidance and support and I also acknowledge and appreciate the amount that was already infused into our budget. We're also starting on Thursday, on the fourteenth, a series of meetings where we're going to be focusing on long-term issues and how we can generate revenue for our school district through alternative means. What else can we do to control the costs? And we have been doing several things for that. One of them is related to the programs that will be grant-based. I can at least share three of those tonight. Two of them are related to STEM programs, science, technology, education, and math. One in collaboration with Boston University, another through, another grant program called Project Lead the Way. We're going to be able to offer AP Physics, AP Computer Science, in fact, bring engineering program all the way down to seventh, eighth grade level and these are both grant-based. Also, we have, we have programs that, a program that we're starting called Mind Up, acknowledging the anxiety and stress that our students are feeling and you may have seen that during our meetings. But in addition to what we have been discussing, this will also have a STEM alignment. Students will first learn about how our body and brain functions and then they will start talking about ways of addressing different situations that they're encountering in our schools. This is again integrating a program that we had started years ago. On the program side, you On the program side, you may remember that we've been talking about our structured learning program and our autism program quite a bit. They are seen as exemplary and best practices in the area. We were able to bring back several students, including this past school year, and we are expecting at least one more student to come back to our structured learning program, which is helping reduce the tuition cost on that. We have at least one student tuitioning into Granby from another district. Same thing with the autism program. We are able to keep our students who need that type of service in our district, but also we are looking at least at one possibility of a student tuitioning in from another district. We have seen our students graduate a couple of weeks ago. Eighty-seven percent of them are going to colleges. Most of, a majority of them are going to colleges of their choice, from Ivy League to local colleges. Nine percent chose to remain in workforce, and they're going to be pursuing their career choices. Four percent were undecided at that time. So what I would like to leave you with is this plea. There are a lot of good things happening in our district. It takes a lot of work, but mostly, as you could see, it takes a lot of collaboration. And as long as we come together and look at our problems as opportunities to make improvements to our beloved school district and beloved town, I can tell you that we are on the right track. So tonight, respectfully, we ask the board for our budget.
Do we have any questions or discussion? In the lime green shirt, I think it's lime green.
If I understand it correctly, the two-hundred-and-thousand dollars-
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, John Matthew, two-eighty-eight Taylor Street. If I understand it correctly, the two-hundred-thousand dollars as a transitional amount, is that for the one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand deficit that the chairman of the School Committee mentioned?
That amount that was mentioned earlier, the two-hundred-thousand dollars, is before the one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars that I mentioned. So those are two different items.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Pam.
Where did the two-hundred-thousand dollars come from? You said you found it.
The two-hundred-thousand dollars is out of general revenue. What happened was that there was the initial budget, actually, initial three or four or five budgets that were under discussion, and after the first one was presented, which did not have this, in that, my understanding is that the Select Board at the time asked Mr. Martin if he could go back and look at the budgets and the income items and see if there's some way that he could figure out to create an additional two-hundred-thousand dollars, and that's what happened.
Okay, so Emery, are you still short one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, or is that, no, you're still short? Okay, can I just say something? I was on the school board in the nineties when the new, I forget the name of the bill went through, but it was under net school spending. And this town, from nineteen ninety-three, has only done the minimal net school spending that they had to spend. Also, Cherry Street, chief, the schools had to pay for, I believe, fourteen mowings and No other department had to do that. It was, at that time, it was considered important for the schools, and we were seventy-five percent of the budget, and the town side was twenty-five percent of the budget. So when we took a hit from the state for five-hundred-thousand, the school department took a hit for four-hundred-thousand, and the town took a hit for a hundred-thousand. It was a hard time. We came through it. We became school of choice. We did what we could, but we're still only, only doing the minimum net school spending. We put up the new school. We don't have enough money to borrow to fix this school all the way. I understand that there's a nine-thousand-something that you're putting towards expenses. Is that going to be for, like, computers and things? Because when's the last time that the school department was able to get new, to get new electronics into the schools? If we can't fix it all, we're going to have to make it look good, and we're going to have to give the kids at least things that's going to help them be able to go to college.
All right, so we'll let Emery answer that question.
Excuse me?
We're going to let Emery answer that question about the nine-thousand dollars and the electronics.
Okay.
Pam, the nine-thousand dollars is not for electronics or computers. In fact, ninety-nine percent of the, you probably know this, but ninety-nine percent of the computers in our school district is donated, thanks to the continuous work that our tech director has been doing for years. So it's not related to any tech expense.
So then we're not even bringing that up to, to make it so that the kids can actually be able to go off to college and whatever? I know there's good, this is a good school, but after sixth grade, if we don't do something and make this school look better, and make this school a school that kids can go to to be able to go to college, they're walking, and they're going to walk to other districts, and we're going to have to pay for that. And the kids here are going to have less and less and less.
Thank you. We have a point of order. Can you please wait for the microphone?
Dennis Hool, Chickaby Street. My question was, how can three-hundred-and-five-thousand, fourteen years ago, still be used against us, so to speak, as a percentage of the net school spending? I have a chart that shows the regional schools, and Granby is, Granby parameters are three-point-oh. The additional amounts at town meetings have been appropriated, six-point-two. So that's less than ten percent. All the other communities are ten, twenty, and thirty percent over net school spending. I really don't feel that these figures that I voted, that I questioned on should be used as net schools, figures over net school spending, because that's nine-hundred-thousand, and I can justify two-hundred-thousand that you guys appropriated to give us for the schools. The rest of it, I can't justify. I'm sorry, that's rehashing figures.
John Libero, speaking for the Finance Committee. It's complicated. Actually, there are some, I think, misconceptions that I think I want to try to address. First misconception is that when you're looking at some figures available on schools, particularly from the internet, you're not always getting apples to apples. One of the, one of the things that's different, and has been different for the last quite a few years, even going back before nineteen ninety-three, Pam, was that schools in Massachusetts have this formula, which is generated for minimum net school spending, and then the town figures out, as part of that, how much of town expenses were really dedicated to the schools. And there's some formulas that have to be followed to what counts and what doesn't count. One of the biggest things, though, for Granby is that this retired teachers' health care is counted in a lot of towns and is allowed to be counted under the government regulations, but is not counted in Granby because of mistake that was made in accounting years and years and years ago. And so, all along, all the time that I've been on the Finance Committee, there's been an amount of between four and five-hundred-thousand dollars, which Granby does not count against what the school gets to bring them up to minimum net school spending, but instead has just spent the money. And that's one of the measures that I think that people ought to keep in mind, as to, in fact, Granby has been very generous to the school system in comparing to what the state formula is. The second thing is that when we voted fourteen years ago for an override for the schools, it's been said, I think, virtually every year, that when the town passes an override, which is not a de-exclusion rider or something like that, if it passes it for another specific budget purpose, that is required to be spent on that purpose for one year only. After that, it's part of the general revenue of the town. Now, since the override was passed, every year since then, the Finance Committee has, in fact, advocated for the additional three-hundred-and-five-thousand to be part of the school budget every year. That's another measure of what we think of as the support of the town of Granby for the school system. The two-hundred-thousand dollars is different this year. The two-hundred-thousand dollars comes from just a different source, and as I said, that in addition to the four-hundred-some-odd-thousand for retired teachers' health care with the school spends, in addition to the over two-million dollars on in-kind expenses that the town spends, which is buried throughout the rest of the budgets, and in addition to the three-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar override, the Finance Committee voted, as part of this whole transition effort, to get us to where we can make a thorough understanding of town finances and expenses on both the municipal and the school side, the Finance Committee voted to support that. If that, if you need some more information, I'd be glad to try to get some.
Mr. Evren's been trying to get my attention for the last ten minutes, so I'm going to let him speak again, and then bring it back out to the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mariter. As I mentioned earlier, our school budget has a gap of one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. So I would like to amend Article twenty-two, item one, related to the school budget, and change the total amount to seven million, nine-hundred-and-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars by transferring one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars from the General Purpose Stabilization Fund for the purposes of covering operating expenses.
So we have an amendment now on the floor. I need a second. I need a motion to stop debate on the main article and to discuss the amendment. Do I have a motion? And a second? So now the floor is opened up to discuss the amendment only. The amendment, again, is proposing to change the total amount of the school budget to seven million, nine-hundred-and-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars by transferring one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars from the General Purpose Stabilization Fund for the purpose of covering operating expenses. So do we have, actually, we do have a discussion on this amendment, and then I will open it to the floor.
Last year, we had the same kind of budget questions. We had a proposed amount in the budget, and then amendment was offered to take some initial money out of stabilization funds. At that time, I believe the recommendation was to actually make that two different motions, because to take money from the stabilization funds requires a two-thirds vote. And if by some chance this is all just one vote for the school budget, and it doesn't get a two-thirds vote, then the entire school budget is dismissed rather than the extra one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand. So what, exactly what is it that we are voting on here, madam?
So right now, we're discussing the amendment. In order to pass the amendment, it has to pass by a majority. If the amendment attaches to the budget, it requires a whole school budget to pass by a two-thirds majority. However, what we are going to do to ensure that we have a school budget is bifurcate the vote. So the amendment, we will vote on first. If it passes, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. Then we will vote on the rest of the school budget, and that only has to pass by a majority. And I'll clarify that again as we get closer to see if the amendment's going to even pass.
My name's Robert Cannon, and I'm here representing the Finance Committee on this matter. The School Committee brought this to the Finance Committee in regard to the amendment one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. After listening to their argument, by a divided vote, the Finance Committee decided to support it. The divided vote was three to one. We had one member that was absent that evening.
So do we have questions on the amendments? Up on the bleachers?
Good evening. Greg Leonard, one-sixty-eight Batso Street. What is the source of the one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar deficit, and how long have we been aware of this?
So Greg, as we're planning for a new budget, we're looking at the revenue coming our way, then we have, we estimate our expenses. The current deficit, after all the other amounts that were included in the budget, the current remaining amount is one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. I'm not sure I understand what the source, what you're asking about the source, but that's the difference between the revenue source and the estimate for expenses for next year. Is that what you're asking about?
Wait, wait till the microphone comes back.
Now, specifically, given the explanation from the Finance Committee that we are above minimum state school spending, what is costing the one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar deficit, even after we agreed to spend an additional three-hundred-thousand dollars towards the school budget?
Well, let me see if I can answer it a different way. The state-required school spending is the minimum amount that we can spend, or we can't go below that amount. That's a state mandate. But also, based on the conversations that we've been having over the course of years, it's been established that that amount is not, is inadequate. It's not just us saying it. If you look at the news, many towns are having similar conversations. So I'm not sure I still understand the premise, but the amount that the state is mandating towns to use is not really based on a formula that adequately funds their educational needs. So the way the budget is built is not based on what the state is giving to us. We're looking at the educational needs in the school district. So all that added together determines how much we are anticipating, we're expecting to spend next year for all the services, programs, salaries, and everything else that we have in our school district. The revenue side is already determined. That is, the state is giving us, or state is telling us that this is how much we have to spend, and then whatever is added through interactions within the town. This year, it happens to be two-hundred-thousand dollars more than we had, at least at the beginning of the conversation, and the three-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars, which is the override two thousand and five, two thousand and four. So when you look at that revenue and compare it to what the estimate was as far as expenses for next year, with the inclusion of the two-hundred-thousand dollars and all that, the remaining difference is one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars.
One last time, we'll try to answer your question.
Okay, once again, you had an estimate of what your expenses were going to be. So was that a difference of $185,000 in the expenses? Or was the difference in, what I'm hearing is, you're not getting a difference in the revenue. So for some reason, you have a difference in expenses of $185,000. And how is that being addressed? If it's not being addressed, then we're going to be looking at this again next year. Thank you.
So the budget is what we estimate to spend. That's the budget for everybody. Everybody has an estimate for how much they're expecting to spend, and ours is none indifferent. Are you asking about what would be affected if we do not have $185,000? So the budget is an estimate of how much we need to spend to be able to deliver the services and programs and pay the salaries. It's already there. We calculate that.
I understand that. I'm with the Board of Assessors in the town of Granby, and I've been on the Board of Assessor for 20-plus years. I know what my expenses are going to be, and I hold to my expenses. I've never asked for more money than what my budget has allowed. And it seems as though we're asking for more money than your budget allows. There's no department in town that gets to do that. And somehow or another, it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
So, okay. Thank you.
We have a question over here in the bleachers in the blue shirt. No, no, right here, the woman.
Hi, Diana Pell here, A. Karen Drive. So before we vote on this, I'm going to ask one more time, since this has been the ongoing ritual, and I'm sure that the Finance Committee, as well as Chris, would probably appreciate it if we thought about amending our vote so every year we're not short, which is why we go through this, which is somewhat the answer to your question. We've been doing this for over a decade. Many people here can attest to that, because the budget has never been aligned appropriately with what the school needs are, based upon the town and based upon the funding shortage. Unfortunately, what keeps happening is the state keeps cutting farther and farther back. Now, the population has decreased. I know that's probably where you're going, but within three years, we will be stable again with students coming into Granby, as well as the students who are choosing to go out of Granby because of the lack of resources that we've been able to provide due to the budget. So I would just ask that maybe instead of voting on this amendment, that we consider revising the budget for the 305. That's been the same ongoing issue year after year, so that it's amended going forward, so we don't always have to do the two-thirds. And I believe this was the same exact issue we've had for the last two years.
Well, we do have to vote on the amendment in this meeting.
John Libero speaking for the Finance Committee. In one way, we have sort of always agreed with that. Finance Committee has said, year after year, if the budget is going to be more and more and more, and it's going to happen every year, the way to do that is not to come to town meeting and have an argument about taking out of the stabilization fund, another stabilization fund. The way to do that is to send the whole question to a town vote and ask for a town override to raise more money to bring this amount of revenue that we have in line with what people want to spend. That happened a couple of years ago and was turned down, so if you think we can get a school override, another school override, we're all for it. But without that, I don't see we're going to go around this.
A question over here. Yes.
I'm asking everyone to vote no on this amendment. We're giving the school $200,000 already. First of all, it's not the Finance Committee, it's not the Select Board that's giving them the money, it's the voters here. I feel the school has to give a little bit in and give up the $185,000. The total school budget, according to the Finance Committee, is around $13 million. Now, you should be able to find $185,000. So I'm asking everyone to vote no on this amendment.
All right. We have a comment over here, striped shirt.
Rebecca Alexander, 197 West State Street. What will be affected if this additional $183,000 doesn't pass? What's getting cut?
Okay.
That's what I thought was being asked earlier. So currently, for the $185,638, the potential reductions include a teacher in elementary school, a teacher in high school, junior, senior high school, three team leader positions, 25% reduction, or 0.25 reduction in instrumental music. We have JV sports, three clubs, seventh and eighth grade advisors, assistant athletic director, a special education contingency that was part of the budget, and basically anything that allows the superintendent, the administration, or the school committee to attending conferences that we go to, which is a $3,000 amount, but that basically adds up to $185,638. No idea.
Do you want to follow up with that?
John Libero for the Finance Committee. Finance Committee makes recommendations. The town votes the way it wants to vote. But one thing that the Finance Committee likes to make sure is that people have the same information that we have, the same set of facts that we have. So I'd like to just correct one thing that was said. The total amount that the town is spending on schools this year is close to $12 million, and that includes Pathfinder and so on. The amount that the schools themselves spend in their budget for running the schools themselves is a total of, is about $7.72 million. The rest of it is not really within their control, in that it comes from the amount that the town spends for the services it provides to the schools, that snow removal, it's paying for, all the fringe benefits, stuff that are not within the school budget, plus the retired teachers' health care and so on. Those are things which they have no direct control over. They have some indirect control over in the long run, but in the short run, they have no direct control over. So if they want to cut $185,000 out of their budget, what they're working with is a budget not of 13 million, but of more like, what did I say, seven and a half, seven, six, so.
I think part of the problem that we face every year is the fact that it's given the minimum net school spending amount. They don't give anything extra than the minimum. I would like to ask, how much of money is in the general fund?
In the general stabilization fund? Not the general fund. Are you asking free cash? You're saying general fund?
That's correct. It could be free cash, but we just call it the general fund, because that way there, you don't have to have a two-thirds vote, and it can all go. And next year, it will continue in the budget, and they won't have to come back like this every year after that.
Pam, I don't actually quite understand the question, but maybe one of the things is that the total budget for this year is 21-point-something million dollars. And the point is that in order for the town to spend any money on anything, there has to be an authorization by the town meeting to let people spend the money. And then the second thing is, in order for us to be able to collect taxes, there has to be a match between the income and the outgo. So right now, there's a match between an expected $21 million of income and $21 million of outgo for next year, depending upon how the town votes on these articles.
What I'm asking is, is there the $187,000 in the general fund so that he can change his amendment instead of it coming out of a fund that is in the stabilization, which would take a two-thirds vote? If we take the money out of the general fund, it will only be a regular vote, 50%, and it will be in their budget from now on, and we won't have to go through this.
Well, let me bring up and push that to the limit as an example of what mathematician does when examining some ideas. Suppose we wanted to let the, suppose we wanted to let the school department spend $15 million next year, all right? There's $21 million coming in. We said, suppose we let them spend $15 million. Well, when you came around to trying to get the state to certify your tax rate, they'd look at it and they'd say, well, wait a minute. We see that you have $21 million coming in, but this extra $10 million that you voted for schools means you've got $10 million more allocated than you have coming in. You can't do that. You have to go back in budget.
All my question is, and should be pretty easy one to answer, is how much money is in the general fund?
Madam Moderator, I can perhaps shed some light on this. I think what Mrs. Mayhew was referring to is free cash. We, at this point in time, have $0 of free cash. It was all appropriated at a last town meeting. I also would like to correct the statement that she made regarding net school spending. If you add the 305 from the override that we had roughly 14 years ago, together with the $200,000, together with the $403 for the insurance, that's $908,000 over net school spending.
We're talking from 1993, 30 years.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
So there's no money at all in any fund, general fund or free, there's no money. This town is broke. Is that what you're saying?
We have no money in free cash. It's all been allocated from the.
So it's all got a spot for tonight's people, right? Tonight's departments. Is that where it all is?
Okay, Pam, let me, hopefully, I can try and explain this for you a little bit. Every year, the Department of Revenue tells us what we can spend out of general fund for budgetary purposes. That is what is known as free cash. We can't expend anything more than that, because we don't have permission from DOR to spend more than that, okay? When we put the budget together for FY '19, we took into account all the taxes that we could raise. We estimated what our local receipts would be. We used every other possible revenue source to come up with this number. We have no additional funds available outside of the stabilization fund at this point in time.
So I just have one other question. If you hadn't taken the money, I wasn't here last, at the last meeting, I was sick, so I apologize. But if you hadn't taken that 1.3 million out of the free cash, and you had taken it as a loan to fix the roof, then we would certainly have enough money to make sure that the town would have been able to finance everything it needed.
Do we have further comments, Mr. Randall?
Thank you, George Randall, 52 Taylor Street. Madam Moderator, I feel your discussion is heading in the wrong direction from the amendment that has been made, and accordingly, I'd like to call the question for a vote.
So Mr. Randall has asked me to stop debate on the amendment and to move the question. In order for me to move the question, I need two-thirds voting to move the question, so please raise your cards. I believe that is two-thirds. Thank you very much. So now we will be voting on the amendment, whether or not we're going to be attaching the amendment to the main motion. In order for the amendment to be attached, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The amendment passes by a majority. So now we have, we're going to come back to discussing the Item 1 as amended. Does anybody have any further questions on Item 1 as amended in the front here?
My question applies to Item 1, but also several other similarly structured items in Article 22. This Item 1 has a line item for personal services. That seems very vague to me. My first question is, what is that? But furthermore, other items in this article have a line item for personal services, as well as a line item for salary. Seems like that all should be one thing, if I'm guessing what personal service is, but what is it?
The difference is this: personal services is full-time wages, part-time wages, overtime, incentive pays, longevity pays, anything that relates to a payroll. The salary line item is, we break out what the elected officials get versus what the employees get. That is the only difference between salary and personal services. You can lump the two together, because they all are considered wages.
So you're, I understand what you said, but could I say it a different way, that personal services are all kinds of hourly wages and benefits, salaries are not?
It's not benefits. It's all wages and other type of stipends. Like I said, longevity pay, and incentive pay, educational pay, things of that nature, okay? But it's not benefits. Benefits is carried down in the lower amount when we talk about the retirement and things of that nature. That's where benefits are all carried.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the school budget? One more question, and then we will vote on the budget.
I asked this question at a few other town meetings, and nothing was done about it. I think it would be helpful that everyone in this audience, if you could present the total school budget on one page, and I'll make a comment. And I'll make a comment, John. The total school spending is over $13 million when you add the $403,000 of retired health insurance for teachers. It's over $13 million. But this budget for the school is very misleading. We should see an amount of $13 million. Whether the school department has control over an item doesn't determine whether it should be shown in their budget or not. So, it's very misleading. People think that the school budget is 7 point some odd million dollars. It's a lot higher than that. I'm just saying it would be more helpful if you present the numbers as they are.
Very quickly, I'm not sure where the $13 million number is coming from. Even if you look at our website and everything added, including the grants and revolving funds, we're not really getting to that number. I understand there are some additional amounts. But I just want to quickly comment on what you said, Rich, that the whole amount is not under our control. As you know, in-kind is not something that we control. In fact, 2.1 to 2.2 million dollars really goes out of our budget as soon as it comes in because that's the money we're paying for the services that the town offers. So, not everything in that budget really goes for operations or everything else. I just wanted to make sure that it's clear.
So, I am now going to call the vote for the school budget. Excuse me? We're going to bifurcate it? Uh, the amendment? Right. Do you want to do the school budget first? Is there a reason? So, we're going to vote on the school budget first, and then we're going to vote on the amendment that's attached to the budget. So, for the school budget to pass, the 7.7 and some odd change, that has to pass by a majority. And then, we're going to vote that, and then, we're going to vote on the amendment for the extra $185,000, which must pass by a two-thirds. So, all those in favor of the school budget of 7.7 million, 21,123, please raise your cards. Thank you. Anyone opposed? The budget passes by a majority. And now, we will vote on the amended amount of $185,000, and that requires a two-thirds vote. I'm actually going to have the counters come out. And if you are standing and you are a voter, you must find a seat to be counted. There's plenty of seats over here in the bleachers. There's seats up front, but you cannot be standing. So, we are now voting on $185,638 to be added to the school budget coming out of the general purpose stabilization fund. All those in favor, please raise your cards and keep them raised so we can count. Are the counters set? You can drop your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards and hold them up until I tell you to put them down. You can put them down. Thank you. So, the amended amount passed by a two-thirds majority by eight votes. That was 149 yes to 31 no. 149 yes, 31 no, for a total of 211 votes. The moderator will now call on Mr. Libera to present the motions under Items 2 through 5. So, for the rest of the items, we will be presenting them in clumps of four. You will have the ability to ask questions on any of the four that we are motioning, and then, we'll take a vote on each one individually.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There'll be four of these. I'll read them, and then, as the moderator said, we can have a discussion on any parts that people want. Item number two, the same motion for the school department transportation, Item three, same motion, the moderator. Salary, $175. Expenses, $75, for a total budget of $250. Item four, the same motion for the selectmen. Salaries of $9,699. Personal services of $196,708. Expenses of $145,136. A capital outlay of $25,332, for a total budget of $376,875. Item five, same motion to the Finance Committee. Expenses, $1,815. Thank you.
Second, are there any questions on Items 2, 3, 4, or 5? We have a question in front here. Which item?
Item number four, John Pelham, Muncing Ridge. It says salary $9,600, and personal services, which I was told is hourly wages and related things, is almost $200,000. I just, that seems way unbalanced. I thought the selectmen must need a lot of support.
Is there a question in there?
My question is, is a request to please explain itemized slightly the $200,000 of personal services.
Among others, I'm sure you can get a more detailed answer here, but among others, the selectman means the whole operation that reports to the selectman. So, it includes the town administrator, includes secretary of town administrator, and includes all people who perform those kind of services. And it has nothing to do with just the Board of Selectmen meetings or the port that they do at meetings. It's all the work that goes on in the office.
Thank you for the explanation.
We have a question in the back. Can you stand up, please, so they can see you? Thank you.
Hi, Deb Matthew, Taylor Street. Motion two. I was wondering why there's a $30,000 increase for one year for transportation when we have fewer kids, and we will have fewer kids?
Deb, our regular transportation budget is fixed. It's by contract. What makes that number fluctuate is the special education transportation, which we are by law required to provide.
So, each one of these items has to be voted on separately. So, all those in favor of Item 2, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 2 passes by a majority. All those in favor of Item 3, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 3 passes by a majority. All those in favor of Item 4, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And all those in favor of Item 5, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Passes by, I'm sorry, passes unanimously. Item 4 passed by a majority. Mr. Libera will now present the items 6 through 9.
Thank you. Item 6, same motion. Town accountant, personal services, $30,000. Expenses, $27,000, for the total budget of $57,000. Item 7, same motion, the assessor's office. Salaries of $11,103. Personal services of $38,112. Expenses of $18,104, for a total budget of $67,319. Item 8, same motion, town treasurer. Salary, $49,915. Expenses, $9,300. Total budget, $59,215. And Item 9, same motion, tax collector. Salary, $43,445. Personal services, $11,000. Expenses, $21,202, for a total budget of $75,647. Thank you.
Second, any questions on Items 6 through 9? Pam has a question.
Hi, do we have a town accountant yet?
Do we have a what?
A town accountant.
Right now, Mr. Martin performs accounting services for the town separate from his role as the town administrator.
Are we looking for a town accountant?
We've done that in the past. Years ago, we had a part-time town accountant, which is really all that the town needs. There are a couple of things that we found out. One is that it is very, very difficult to find a part-time accountant. Basically, you're probably looking at people who've been retired for years who might want to do a little something. Second thing is that we went out to an outside firm for a while, and our outside group for a while, and had them do the accounting services. And it just didn't work out. They were not here. It was hard to get in touch with them about items that they had questions on and so forth. So, all in all, financially, it works smoothly, and is probably the least expensive way we've been able to do this over the last few years.
Well, the only reason why I was asking is because Chris Martin has a lot on his plate. He's got to get done, bring new items to the town, new things so that we can vote on and make the town better. It's just taking up his time to have to be the town accountant. That's all.
Thank you. Is there a question over here?
Rich Demorecki. Next meeting, could you at least put in last year's budget numbers so we have something to compare these two, so we can make an intelligent decision? That's all we have, is this year's budget numbers? It would be very helpful.
So noted. In the back here?
Joe Rakowski, Max Menion Drive. I totally agree with what Rich said. I think the information that gets prepared here is too simplistic. There's no reason we shouldn't have at least one year or two years before because it just helps us get a better sense for the expenditure this year. So, I agree with the other town member.
Thank you.
It's hard to disagree because the Finance Committee requires the last four years of the information when we're looking at budgets. But I will say this, that the information of having past years is out there. It was published in the booklet that's published before the meeting, two weeks before the meeting. So, it's on the town website and is available for all. The reason it doesn't appear on here is because these are motions that get voted. So, you could have everybody bring the town booklet with them, or hand out copies of the town booklet, or hand out the budget piece of the town booklet. It would be all there, but it would have to be something different from these motions that are read.
We have one more question in the bleachers, and then, we'll take the vote. Can you stand so she sees you?
So, I would actually agree that I think...
Name, please.
Diana Pelter, 8 Karen Drive. I think it would be helpful if we had a year-over-year on every accounting in town when you present a town meeting, so you have one column for the physical year we're currently in, and a second column on what we're voting for. I think that is where a lot of our confusion comes time and time again. And I think maybe a handout, I think we've spoken about this before, about basically a town meeting 101, so people understand how they can amend things on the open act.
We do have that. It's the orange pamphlet that was passed out at the front table.
I am aware how it works. It doesn't appear that all other parties in the room may or may not be aware, so it may help facilitate some of this.
Well, we do announce that at the beginning of town meeting that we do have a parliamentary procedure pamphlet in the front, so everybody should have one and read it and understand how town meeting works and the procedure.
Okay. And finally, I guess my question, as much as I very much enjoy dealing with Chris, and I've had wonderful conversations with him and find him quite helpful, I do see this somewhat as a conflict of interest in his current role being the town accountant as well.
All right. In order for any of the Items 6 through 9 to pass, they must pass by a majority. All those in favor of Item 6, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 6 passes unanimously. All those in favor of Item 7? Thank you. Any opposed? Item 7 passes unanimously. All those in favor of Item 8? Thank you. All those opposed? Item 8 passes unanimously. And all those in favor of Item 9? Thank you. All those opposed? Item 9 passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera to present the Items 10 through 13.
Thank you. Item 10, same motion. Personnel board expenses, $500. Item 11, same motion. Town clerk salary, $54,201. Personal services, $3000. Expenses, $2,455, for a total budget of $59,656. Item 12, same motion, the Board of Registars. Personal services... Personal services, $2000. Expenses, $31,575 for a total budget of $33,575. Item 13, same motion. Board of appeals, expenses, $1,580.
Can I have a second? Any questions on items 10, 11, 12, or 13? Each of those items has to pass by a majority. All those in favor of item 10? Thank you. All those opposed? Item 10 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 11? Thank you. Any opposed? 11 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 12? Thank you. All those opposed? Passes unanimously. And all those in favor of item 13? Thank you. Any opposed? Item 13 passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Mr. Glassman to present items 14 through 17.
Public buildings, personal services, $135,382. Expenses, $437,694. Capital outlay, $62,530. Total, $635,606. Item 15, same motion. Police department, personal services, $993,705. Expenses, $53,150. Capital outlay, $1,000. Total, $1,000, $1,047,855. Item 16, same motion. Auxiliary police, expenses, $1,754. Item 17, same motion. Dispatch, $211,831. Expenses, $35,840. Total, $247,671.
Thank you. Second. Any questions on 14, 15, 16, or 17? We have two. Pam?
Out of some of this money, are we going to start to work on making our buildings handicap accessible, especially over at Dufrance Park? You can't even get into the lavatories. So are we going to work on that? Because I'd like to be able to go in all the buildings. And I'd like to have it so the doors have a button so I can go in.
I'm sorry, Pam, I couldn't understand what you're saying. Can you say that again?
I would like to have the buildings handicap accessible so that I can get in them. And preferably have a little button so the door opens up so I can go in by myself. We can't even, at Dufrance Park, you can't even get in to the lavatories. They're not even handicap accessible. And we invite people from out of town to come.
Do you have another question? I'm sorry, what'd you say?
My question is, is some of this money-
On what item?
On, excuse me, public buildings. Is some of that money going to go towards making things handicap accessible so that we can get in, pushing a button on the doors, and the fact that Dufrance Park, you can't even get in the lavatories, they're not handicap accessible?
All right. At this time, I'm being told no, at this time.
We're not even attempting to do one building, nothing, misstayed Nate? I mean, you guys were supposed to start that in the 90s.
I think the answer is still no.
Who is saying no? The Board of Selectmen?
It's not in any of the budgets that have been proposed.
That's a shame.
Rich, do you still have a question?
On public buildings, the budget went up $73,000. Could you just tell us, capital outlays went up quite a bit, and personal services went up a fair amount? Can you tell us what's going on there?
There's something like $30,000 of repairs going to be made at the COA, and an increase in the amount of money for repairs at the public safety complex of about $10,000. So that's a good chunk of the difference.
In order for the items to pass, they must pass by a majority. So all those in favor of item 14? Thank you. Any opposed? Item 14 passes by a majority. Item 15? Thank you. Any opposed? Item 15 passes by a majority. Item 16? Thank you. Any opposed? Item 16 passes unanimously. And item 17? Thank you. Any opposed? Item 17 passes unanimously. And then, item 18? Okay. The moderator calls on Mr. Glassman to present the motion under item 18.
Item 18, same motion. Fire department, personal services, $430,574. Expenses, $39,210. Out-of-state travel, $2,600. Capital outlay, $38,350. Total budget, $510,734.
We're going to stop at this item. Do I have a second? Okay. Is there any questions or discussions on item 18? We'll do Rich and then Mr. Randall.
Rich Demeraki. Could the fire chief explain, I think he explained a little bit prior, about the $300,000 increase in his budget from last year?
He's coming up.
The question being the difference of the $300,000? Is that what you were asking? Okay. So if you notice that there was a decrease in the ambulance budget from an article earlier, what we did was we took 75% of the wages and overtime and moved it over to the fire department where it appropriately belongs.
Those are wages that were previously in the ambulance department that you moved to the fire? Is that what you said?
Essentially, yes. We're moving 75% of the wages out of the enterprise fund for the ambulance and moving it into the fire budget.
Mr. Randall, do you still have a question?
Thank you. George Randall, 52 Taylor. Chief, I'd like a quick explanation of the out-of-state travel before I support that, and just a quick explanation of capital outlay. Thank you.
The out-of-state travel is for continuing education training for me to attend a conference that occurs each year in Indianapolis called FDIC. It's called the Fire Department Instructors Conference, but it's grown over the years to be more than just instructors. It's fire chiefs of all the fire industries who go there. There are tons of information and classes that are conducted at this particular conference. And to attend the conference would require that money. As far as the outlays, just give me one second. So capital outlays is broken into various line items. Communications and technology, $1,300. Equipment, $3,000. Call force uniforms, $2,000. Retirement, excuse me, I'm looking at the ambulance budget, my bad. Fire outlays. Computers, $2,000. Computer software, $2,000. Hoses, nozzles, and appliances, $2,500. PPE, personal protective equipment, $26,100. And portable radios and pagers, $5,750.
Thank you.
Where's that chair?
Any further questions? We have one in the bleachers. Diane?
I do have a question in regards to the $300,000 of the $430,000 that you're indicating is overtime and have come out of the ambulance enterprise fund. Because on page 43, the fees are $285,000, 214, still listed. So I guess my question is, that $300,000, is that all, how much of that money is overtime? And how much is actual salaries, which I think is something we should probably keep an eye on in the town as well?
So for full-time wages, $222,674 is for the wages for the full-time staff. Overtime of the, now, again, I want to just preference this by saying that this is 75% of what the full-time staff gets. Some of that is, 25% of their wages and overtime comes from the enterprise fund. Overtime for the full-time employees is listed at $75,000. That would equal about the $300,000.
There's one more question on the bleachers, and then we'll vote for the items.
Dennis Houle, Chickaby Street. This does not include any new additional firefighters, full-time?
Yes, it actually includes a addition to the full-time staff of one full-time firefighter paramedic. So there is additional monies for an additional position.
So each of these items must pass by a majority. All those in favor, I'm sorry, we're just on one item, item 18. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 18 passes by a majority. Mr. Glassman will now present items 19 through-
Thank you. Item 19, same motion. Inspection department, personal services, $59,464. Expenses, $22,805. For a total of $82,269. Item 20, same motion. Preventative inspections, Board of Health. Personal services, $13,000. Expenses, $3194. Total, $16,194. Item 21, same motion. Sealer awaits and measures. Expenses, $2730. Item 22, same motion. Emergency management. Expenses, $8272. Capital outlay, $6,000. Total, $14,275. $272.
Thank you. Second. Any questions on items 19 through 22? Each one of these items must pass by a majority. All those in favor of 19? Thank you. Any opposed? Item 19 passes unanimously. Item 20, please raise your cards. Please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? 20 passes unanimously. Item 21, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Is that an opposed in the back? Item 21 passes unanimously. Item 22? Thank you. Any opposed? Item 22 passes unanimously. Mr. Wilson will now present items 23 through 26.
Item 23, same motion. Highway department, personal services, $335,027. Expenses, $110,050. Maintenance of roads, $222,600. Total of $667,677. Item 24, same motion. Snow and ice control, personal services, $84,701. Expenses, $49,000. Maintenance of roads, $119,700. Capital, $16,000. A total of $269,401. Item 25, same motion. Cemetery, personal services, $20,706. Expenses, $3,019. Total of $23,725. Item 26, same motion. Board of Health, salary, $2,868. Personal services, $26,701. Expenses, $8,775. Total of $38,344.
Thank you. Second. Any questions on items 23 through 26? In order for these items to pass, they must all pass by a majority. So item 23, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 24? Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 25? Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And then item 26? Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Moderator asks Mr. Wilson to present 27 through 30.
Item 27, same motion. Counsel on Aging, personal services, $95,145. Expenses, $3,534. Total of $98,679. Item 28, same motion. Senior Lunch Program, personal services, $19,314. Item 29, same motion. Veteran Services, personal services, $13,050. Expenses, $60,700. Total of $73,750. Item 30, same motion. Public Library, personal services, $122,712. Expenses, $43,672. Less grant in aid, minus $11,619. Net expenses, $32,053. A total of $154,765.
Thank you. Second. Any questions on items 27 through 30? We have a question over here?
I don't have a question per se. I would ask you to allow me to make a comment. And my comment is I compliment the library for the exceptional services that they have rendered to this town. They do an amazing job over there.
Thank you. Any further comments before we vote? All right. All those in favor of item 27, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 28? Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 29? Thank you. Opposed? Unanimously. And item 30, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Moderator asks Mr. Wilson to present items 31 through 34.
Item 31, same motion. Historical Commission- Item 31, same motion, historical commission, expenses, $250. Item 32, same motion, 250th parade, expenses, zero. Thanks. Item 33, same motion, retirement of debt, principal on permanent debt, $515,800. Item 34, same motion, interest, $493,478.
Second, any questions on any of those items? All those in favor of item 31, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 31, unanimous. All those in favor of item 32, please raise your cards. That's great, thank you. Anybody opposed to $0? All right, that passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 33, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And all those in favor of item 34, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? 34 passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mr. Cannon to present the motions, the items under 35 through 38.
Item 35, same motion, casualty and liability insurance, $218,500. Item 36, again, the same motion, workers' compensation, county retirement, rather, $997,795. Item 37, same motion, workers' compensation, $146,688. Item 38, same motion, council of governments, $2,318.
Second, any questions on items 35 through 38? We have a question on the bleachers. We have two questions on the bleachers. First, Mr. Houle.
Dennis Houle, Chicagoe Street. Item number 38, council on governments. Is this wise staying in with the COG with the turmoil going on with their agency? I think it would be wise that we pull out?
Is there a question? Diane, do you have a question? Oh.
Is the board of selectmen considering pulling out of the COG?
So there was a question?
At this time, no.
Is there another question? All right, each one of these items must pass by a majority. Oh, do you have a question?
I do. I just have a question in regards to 37. Is that workers' compensation, does that include the pending claim that had not been resolved last year, or is that just annual town premium?
Diane, that question, we can't respond to because of privacy under HIPAA. So each one of these has to pass by a majority. All those in favor of item 35, please raise. Thank you. All those opposed? 35 passes unanimously. Item 36? Thank you. Any opposed? 36 passes unanimously. Item 37? Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And item 38? Thank you. Any opposed? Passes by a majority. Moderator asks Mr. Cannon to finish these items, 39 through 41.
Item 39, same motion, unemployment compensation, $51,909. Item 40, same motion, group health life insurance, $1,527,518. Item 41, same motion, reserve fund, $130,000. Total budget,
Any questions? Second? So the budget is 17.257094 as amended by the school amendment?
The total budget has changed by the amount coming out of stabilization funds, but the budget total that it was read by Rob is in fact what the amount was that was coming out of the general revenue in this budget. So nothing was forgotten. Thank you.
Be careful. So, we have two questions. Rich? And then Pam?
I just had a quick question. 41, the reserve fund. Could you tell us what items generally came out of that reserve fund for the year, just to get an idea of what you're paying? And did you have any money in that fund left over? Did you carry any forward to this current year? I just want an idea of the items you paid out of that reserve fund.
Okay, Rich, in 2017, because that's what's in the booklet, okay, we, they appropriated money for highway department vehicle repairs, necessary repairs to the highway doors as required by the Department of Occupational Safety. We had ambulance department wages. We had to do additional appropriation for pole workers because we had additional elections and town meetings. We also had legal services for the legal department, and we found out we had to do more tree work than what was budgeted for. Any amount that isn't spent is turned back and actually turns into free cash, which I know you have an issue with.
Pam, do you still have a question?
I can understand when we used to have a reserve fund with the finance committee when we only have one town meeting and maybe one or two special town meetings. But now we have town meetings almost every month. So I would suggest to my fellow voters that I don't think that we should have the reserve fund. I think we should keep it in free cash, and that if there's something that comes up, we can just, we, the voters, can decide where the money goes. Thank you.
Thank you. John LaBera for the Finance Committee. The reserve fund, we recommend keep basically where it is, and here's why. It is true, and it's a good thing, that during the town meetings, the special town meetings that occur during the year, there's an opportunity to allocate funds either from other available sources or even out of the reserve fund itself for expenses that come up. But a lot of the expenses, as a matter of fact, usually in any given year, most of the expenses that come up are small items that occur because something happens in the department. The highway department is a good example. If we had to call, and one thing which you should remember, because this is why we're here for this meeting, is that before any money is spent by any department, it is supposed to be allocated. So the mechanism is that the Finance Committee looks at a request for transfer of funds from the reserve fund, and then they decide whether or not that should be allocated to the department or not. Basically, what you're doing at this meeting is granting the Finance Committee the authority to authorize on your behalf the $140,000 that's in that fund. If we didn't do that, then, for example, a $3,000 amount might come up in a department, some small department, and if they're not supposed to spend any money before it's allocated, we would have to call a special town meeting. And what does it cost to have a special town meeting? Kathy, any idea what's it cost to have a, what's it cost, what's it cost to having a special town meeting? So there's, for the amounts that are being asked, that could be a considerable portion of it, just to call a meeting. And let me ask you here, how many of you would come to a special town meeting because somebody asked for a $1,000 transfer from efficient way to make sure that in our small departments, that they don't run out of money for things that they really need?
Do you have a follow-up question?
Yes. When I said we have town meetings all the time, you could just piggyback on those meetings. We have them all the time. We never used to, but we have them at least once a month. They're all the time.
We probably average three a year for special town meetings. So in order for the last three items to pass, they must pass by a majority. All those in favor of item 39? Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 40? Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And all those in favor of item 41? Thank you. Any opposed? Passes by a majority. Two more articles to go, and then we're done. So now the moderator will call on Mr. Joyce to present the motion under Article 23.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from capital equipment needs stabilization fund, $120,800 for the purpose of reducing the funding from tax levy for physical year 2019 appropriations.
Second, is there discussion?
This transfer is to pay for the debt payment on the capital projects that had been approved by the Capital Improvements Committee in prior years.
Any questions or comments? So in order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mr. Shonaki to present the last motion of the night.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to assess the amounts raised and appropriated under these articles and warrants on the estates and personal property of the town of Granby.
Second, are there any questions?
What if we vote no?
Any other question?
Well, I'm all set.
So this requires a majority to pass. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting. And a second, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Thank you.